Thank you.
Second, from Victor.
Any comments, all in favor?
Hi.
Time for any public comment? Ken, do we have any?
Yes, we have one caller. The last four digits of the phone number is 1447. I'm gonna allow you to speak now, please wait until it says you can talk. You're all set caller.
Can't hear you if you're talking.
They may have just called in to listen in. Oh, they do have their hand raised. One second, I'll unmute them again. You're good to talk caller.
I don't have any comment at this time, I was just calling to listen in.
Okay, thank you. They said they were just calling in, no comment. That is the only remote participant from the public.
All right. So your motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Any comments? Oh, okay. So it's Jason Stone and Kirsten's name was spelled wrong? So make those corrections? Accept those corrections, Norman?
Excellent.
All right. All in favor as changed?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, the next board meeting is July 1st, 2020, for 6:00 PM. It's just for election of officers. And it should be fairly short. Okay, item number six. Okay?
Good evening, thanks Bob. I think just anybody, if you can just put your volume down a little bit, then you won't have, we won't have the feedback. Or you can just mute on your computer. Okay, just before I just give you a quick overview of our strategic plan for reopening and recovery, just a couple of updates. The summer school plan has remained unchanged in terms of what the expectations are from the state of Connecticut. We do have a call tomorrow morning as superintendent's at 10:00 AM with Commissioner Cardona. At that time, he'll be reviewing for us the update on the reopening guidelines for fall. So if there are any changes to summer school, we imagine we'll get those tomorrow. We won't be getting the written document tomorrow, but we anticipate getting that next Monday. Prelimarily, we have heard that the kind of stringent stringency of the guidelines that were originally received with summer school are going to be somewhat relaxed for the fall reopening. I hesitate to publicly share any of the preliminary information that we've gotten, but that is the anticipation that it will be less stringent in terms of our expectations for returning to school in the fall. As soon as I get that information, I will share that after the conference call with the Board of Education. We did have the conference call this evening at 5:00 PM with Governor Lamont. And basically, what was talked about was kind of a compliment to the citizens of Connecticut for the efforts they have taken that have kept the virus at a lower rate than we're seeing in some other states. A good deal of the conversation and questions had to do with the travel advisory that they plan to put in place with self-quarantining for people who are traveling to or from designated states. So there was quite a bit of conversation about that. Our parent survey at this point has feedback from 477 parents. And just preliminarily, looking at some of the results, asking parents what would make them feel comfortable about having their child return to school. Some people have said, kind of, it depends. We understand that things can change between now and the end of August, but the majority of parents talked about wanting to know that the school district is following all CDC guidelines. And as I was saying to Dr. Taylor before the meeting started, the responses ranged from, "I'll be comfortable sending my child back to school when there's a vaccine," to "please follow all safety and health precautions." And then, "I'll be comfortable if my child doesn't have to wear a mask all day and doesn't have to follow stringent protocols that could be anxiety-producing for my child." I will do a review of all the results to also update the board on the feedback on the need for childcare as we continue to work with Dolphin Days. A survey that was created by Bloom Shapiro, a confidential survey, went out on Monday to all our staff members to just kind of get a sense of where our staff members are in terms of their comfort level in returning and if they have any situations that would need, that might prohibit them from returning to work. Good news from Ken, that tomorrow we will have 500 Chromebooks delivered. And, you know, we're kind of holding our breath on the delivery date, but with the delivery of 500 Chromebooks tomorrow, that means that every child from grades K to 12 will have a Chromebook should we need to go into distance learning mode again. Our meal distribution has been approved through the summer and that it actually includes a sixth meal for the weekend that we'll be able to provide to parents and children on Fridays. As Kim mentioned to you, in the past, our students had the opportunity to go to another meal distribution center, which was Meriden or Middletown or Meriden. And many of our families didn't take advantage of that. And I think by, just by keeping it local, I think we'll see a greater uptick in participation. We're also more deliberately partnering with the food pantries in Durham and Middlefield. We have sent information out just so families know that there's food that's available to them through food pantries as well. Just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that strategic plan. And let me see if I'm into share at this point. Let's see. Wait, here we go. Let's see. Hi Christine. Good, good. Just because we're also trying to get ready for our presenter, I want to project up here and make sure that that works for you. Okay, we're connected. And now we will project. Okay. Ken, is there a way for me to? Never mind, I just did it. Okay, so as I mentioned to you, we took those six areas from the regional advisory board that the regional advisory teams had identified as their priority areas. And we kind of began in, you know, waiting for greater direction from the state. We started to put a plan together that includes areas that we believe will be guidelines as well as areas that in District 13, we believe are very important. And the first area, of course, is the area of well-being. And what you can see in the plan is the way in which we have addressed potential needs that we see that our students will be having upon return, as well as support that our staff and families may need. The resources we'll be using, who's responsible, the kind of the due date that we want to have these things completed, and the status. We are partnering with Durham and Middlefield Youth and Family Services to provide greater support for our parents and families. Let's try scrolling down here. At the high school level, one of the areas where we'll be focusing on to support our students will be through their advisory classes, also through their health classes. So that work is underway this summer with ways that we're going to be addressing the issues that we believe we will see in our middle school and high school population. We have begun to look at a program that's called Purposeful Play, just one area that we're looking at in terms of engaging our students in play as a way to socially reconnect, problem solve, and begin to develop their stronger school community. We are already engaged in all our surveys and focus groups. And hopefully, if the transportation expectation isn't as stringent, that won't entail the type of focus and time that we had originally anticipated. So these areas are well underway. Feel very good about the progress we're making there. Another thing that, or another part of this that I wanted to share with the board is that when we started partnering with Bloom Shapiro, as I mentioned in previous meetings, that because we don't have an HR person at this time, Bloom Shapiro, who is our auditing agency, also has a HR specialist support. So we have begun working with them. In today's meeting, what they did was they took the plan that I put together, as well as areas that they have, because they're building re-entry-to-work plans for other organizations, not just schools. So today, what we looked at was they inserted into this plan areas that they have. This doesn't show it yet because theirs was still in draft. But they have some areas that we didn't know and don't have the expertise on in terms of HR and then just some other requirements. Even something as basic as what is being suggested is that people don't share a common refrigerator in the work session, the work setting. Don't share a common coffee pot. Don't share a common microwave. So those are all things that have implications in terms of communication, in terms of our physical plant, and how we manage those things. Our order for PPE has gone in. We actually have a second order that was placed through CIRC recently. So masks, shields, gloves, sanitizer, gowns, wipes. We did order thermometers and our sneeze guards. I don't know if you walked through central office, you saw that we have a sneeze guard up there. And all of our offices have been outfitted with sneeze guards right now. I just sent a memo to our 12-month staff, although many of them have already returned to work. We're beginning a flex days-in program schedule for our 12-month employees to be coming back to the office in the beginning of July. Trying to flex people's schedules so that they still can work from home. Trying to be cognizant of people's childcare needs as well and also give us as an organization an opportunity to see what it will be like for us to be back in a school building, because there are things that you don't think about until you're actually in this building and working with a group of other people. Bloom Shapiro had shared with us some training videos. So in the memo that went out to 12-month employees, there were also videos on just kind of basic safety guidelines as well as kind of a detailed video about masks. We've been looking, and I think I mentioned this last time, just, you know, what will the total hours for our custodial staff? What will we be looking at if we determine a particular guideline for cleaning and disinfecting? How many, and I'm going to use the term man-hours, would be needed to do that? And are there other creative ways to use some of our staff or be responsible for cleaning our own office areas? Board of Ed, actually, Andrew had a question last time about memorandums of agreements and what will that look like? Will the board be participating in the creation of MOUs? And I know that that's a topic that will come up tomorrow and will be shared by the commissioner and we'll get greater legal guidance on that. This is just, you know, areas about how we're staffing, how we'll hire substitutes if we need a long-term substitute. If we have a number of people who are out for this foreseeable future, how will we handle that? What will teacher evaluation look like for next year? Athletics, of course, food service. Again, if you walk down the hall, you probably saw that we had a number of boxes of rolling carts because we won't have students walking into the cafeteria. Rather, we'll have somebody delivering meals to the classroom because at this point, we've been told that the recommendation will be for students to remain in their classroom. Also, developing the protocols for any type of delivery for food, other vendors, and if we have any visitors whatsoever to our buildings, what will those entry protocols look like? And, yep, sorry. So kind of our bigger goal is minimize movement throughout the building. So if we can have a teacher move to a classroom rather than the kids moving about the building. However, waiting for greater guidelines tomorrow, but we definitely have developed different schedules and different ways to manage the schedule, kind of the great, greater schedule, and then down to like the minutia of, well, what if the classes are splitting up and you have four kids who need to go to a certain room and 10 who need to go to another? So, you know, at this point, we don't have a definitive plan, but we have thought of that and have some options. Again, we do have some, quite a bit of feedback from the nearly 500 parents regarding what their needs for transportation would be, as well as their ability to transport if that were needed. Our documentation for FEMA reimbursement is well underway with accounting procedures that were shared by Kim. You know, the communication and coordination, kind of just basic, how you communicate during a crisis will be following the protocol that we began in March. And then the teaching and learning loss mitigation. You know, one of the most important things that we'll do, second only to keeping everyone healthy and safe, is how we will be focusing on education and mitigating any greater loss, doing assessments of students to really determine where they are when they're beginning the school year with us. And we basically already have a plan that has been developed, distance learning 2.0, in terms of what will happen if we go to a hybrid, kind of a hybrid plan or if we are out of school altogether again. And you can just, as you run your eyes over this, see the areas that we are focusing on. And again, I'll share this with the board as soon as Bloom kind of integrates their pieces, because I think it definitely added another dimension to this plan. And then the next area is just the potential second wave closing contingency planning, which again, we have heard that there will receive specific guideposts for that so that we'll know what to do, what steps to take, and what will our triggers be to take those steps. So that's what we have so far. The other area I had gone over with you previously was the summer school guidelines that we've, that were given to us by the state. Jen Keane and I have worked together on seeing whether or not we can do some live instruction with students as well as some specialized services and potentially doing some testing for students who need to be evaluated. I'm going to, Jen, really modified the plan, put together all the provisions that we would put in place in order to do some in-person, especially for those students who we feel are most in need of that, you know, support and education. And I will submit that to our health director, actually. When I leave this meeting, we just wanted to remove any personally identifiable information and just have him run his eyes over that. So should we have that approval, have teachers and parents who are interested in participating in live learning this summer, we're going to give that a try. Do you have any questions or anything that kind of jumps out at you as missing or anything that you've heard that you think, gosh, this was a great idea?
Bringing, you know, staff back into the office and you kind of have to like, start like living it to think about, oh, we didn't think about this. I was almost thinking the same thing with summer school. Like, if we were able to bring back just a small group of kids, then teachers will start thinking about, oh, this doesn't work. You know, this does work and.
Completely agree. So in addition to doing this for students, because I think it's a benefit to them, I think it's a benefit to getting us all started. I mean, something I will tell you, and I've brought this up before, very basic, is when you bring a group of people back together again, physical proximity, it's like a magnet. It takes effort. It takes the, how you, you know, structure, the setup, how you put arrows in your hallways, what time you can pass from class to class. Like, there will be a lot of external guidelines that will be absolutely essential in order for us to maintain social distancing.
Are we thinking about having that at more than one school? Or how is that going to work? Are the kids going to be in a cafeteria? Because if we don't want a lot of people together.
So for right now, the application that Dolphin Days is submitting to the state would be for an additional setting at Brewster School. So we need to see, like, well, what areas will we be using in our school for the school day? If we're really not going to be using the gym the way we have in the past, that might be a good setting in order to have that. If there are other rooms that will be needed to be used for that, we're just going to need to have a cleaning protocol that primarily the students who, so far from the survey results that would be using in district childcare, go to Brewster School. So it would be kind of that same school-based cohort of students, but there would have to be, you know, a very stringent cleaning schedule that would be followed.
And most of it will be negotiated by the state? Like, whether we can go back and have the school tested or a parent, or give it a teacher that's tested, like what that protocol will be? Like, is it a total shutdown or?
Yes, that will not, that won't be our call. That will be, you know, specific guidelines and specific reporting that we'll have to do. Something that, you know, we talked about with Bloom this morning was the requirement of each person entering the building indicating, you know, the fact that they're symptom-free. And I mean, specific COVID-19 symptoms that they are free from those symptoms and verifying them. I'm very interested in seeing what the legal advice is on the liability for schools, for students and staff.
And I mean, we know that there are people that are asymptomatic that are infected as well. I don't know what that current situation is. I just replied to your presentation at one point. So I mean, I just, I just have to bear on the title of caution.
And I think that's what many people are struggling with. And in particular, if they have a child at home who's really struggling. And I think sometimes it's hard to see that this can be truly a matter of life or death, and it's not going to last forever. So if, in fact, the decision is to have another school closure or really minimize the number of students in the building, I think we have to see in what ways can we address those major concerns? If that social-emotional load on a child and the increase in anxiety, for instance, is a big issue, in what ways can we address that without being back in school proper as we were before? It's challenging.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
We'll have a lot more discussion over the next several weeks and months.
Is there scheduled meetings outside? Because we typically have had breaks during the summer, but can't see us.
I thought we had one scheduled for July 15th, but I don't know.
Okay. I mean.
It's on my calendar, but I didn't see it in the publishes. So we'll work on that.
Yeah, I would say as we get closer to the school year, I think this summer is different. We need to have multiple Board of Education meetings.
I think it'll be in a two-week kind of a thing come August till we get ready. There's a lot of policy issues that the board is going to have to deal with, like attendance and transportation and all those things that Kath has brought up. Some of those affect the current policies that we have for the school and they have to make some changes.
I, you know, if you wanted, we could schedule a meeting every week. And we could have a short or long, but at least it would be on the calendar. We could have a weekly meeting on Wednesday evenings with an agenda item for just a COVID or a school reopening update. And, you know, we don't have to do that here. We can continue with the Zoom meetings, which I think makes it a little bit easier for us to meet because I think we are, you know, next week, I think by next week, I will have a plan that I want to be able to review with you. So if we can, that July 1st meeting could be a little bit more than just the election of officers, that might be a.
Yeah.
All right, I think it's time for me to go and your presenter to start. Okay, Bob, do you? Okay, Bob, do you do you want to talk just a little bit about MTA graduation? And I sent all of those videos to everybody. I hope you really enjoyed them.
I just wanted to make sure that we have on the record to thank all the people that have worked on those graduations. Amy, that Purdy, Todd Petrino, Amy Schaefer, Brian, Beth, Scott. I don't know who did MDA. Was that Marilyn? Yeah. That was very nice as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I know that I got feedback from a bunch of kids that they liked the graduation more. Did you just? Can't see it. Oh, wow. That's great. So the next item is vote to establish executive search committee. Can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. I will, we form a established, rather, an executive-level search committee, and the 10 members of the Board of Education be that committee.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I can.
Comments? All in favor? Say aye.
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 We need a motion to enter into executive session for purpose of interviews.
I say move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now in executive session. And I need to have Ken stay on track. So I'll go get the first guy.